Are these on?
Oh, why not? Nice things. I always feel like I'm loud enough anyways. Mine's gonna-
People upside.
Is this on? Is this on?
Is it? Let me see if it's red.
Oh, now it's red. Is this on?
No, you can't really hear it though. I think the big thing, reason they have you, because they just want people on the, you know, the YouTube to be able to hear you, but-
Right in the back, there's a little switch on the end. And you slide the switch. And it should turn red.
Hello? Hello? No? Oh, well. Well, I'll just talk loud. How's that? Some I'm good at, so that's good.
Is there something else on the-
Okay. Today's November 9th, 2021. This is the Webster Planning Commission. The purpose of today's meeting is to review the wetlands ordinance. This is open to the public. But I wasn't planning on taking input from the public today. This is a working session for the group here. We will have another public hearing, probably in early December, when we will look for public input. We've had two sessions already for public hearings. And we've gotten some good feedback. And I think everybody on the planning board felt that it needed some work, to put it mildly. Anyway, the first thing, let's take attendance. We have Marlo-
Kara, yep.
Adam Mac.
Adam Mac. Craig Fornier.
And Susan Young.
Susan Young. I think what I'd like to do is explain a little bit about what what this latest version is and why it came about. And then we can talk, I want to mention a few things in here that got changed for a reason. And then we'll open it up for discussion. You can say anything you want. But I was losing sleep over this ordinance, and that's not good. So, there were some problems with it. It was too long. It was inscrutable in the sense that there wasn't enough white space in the document. If you wanted to refer to something, you had to say, "Oh, look at page five halfway down the page in C3492," you know, I mean. Give me a break. So anyway, I did a major rewrite of this thing. And one of the things that we did is we got rid of the, pretty much the findings section. We defined some districts, District 1 and District 2. Does anybody, does everybody know the difference between a district and a buffer?
No, I'm sorry?
A district and a buffer.
Yeah.
But let me-
Go ahead and explain it.
Yeah.
I'm always, I'm always like to be better educated.
This derives from the RSA, the state laws. And Section 67420. In order to accomplish any of the purposes in the zoning ordinance, so what we're basically creating here is an another addendum to the zoning ordinance. And a local legislative body may divide the municipality into districts of a number, shape, and area as may be deemed best suited to carry out the purposes of another ordinance. They reference the previous, what are the purposes of the district? But the local legislative body may regulate and restrict the erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, and use of building structures or land within each district which it creates. All regulations shall be uniform for each class or kind of buildings throughout each district. But the regulations in one district may differ from those in other districts. So basically, you can create a district, say, a business district, or a llama-raising district, or, you know, whatever kind of district you think is going to promote the safety, health, whatever of the town. And what we're creating here is a wetlands watershed district. Now, the district encompasses the wetland and a buffer around that wetland. Now, Webster Conservation Agency hired a company and they have delineated major wetlands, which, major waterways include streams and lakes and wetlands. And that's available in the town hall. You can look at that. I mean, but it's, it's defined in there.
Is it available on the website, to study curiosity?
Yes.
Like the map and everything? Yeah, because you can find it right on the town website, right?
Yeah. Okay, one of the, one of the, one of the way, one of the problems with the whole thing was, it was all the uses and activities defined were were longhand. They were. And they were subject to interpretation, in other words. So what it did is try to create a table. And it lists uses, permitted uses, conditional use permit uses, and not permitted. And one of the things we changed was underground storage of chemicals, petroleum products, toxic or hazardous material. We got in quite a bit of trouble with the last-
Petroleum.
Petroleum. Good. But, so, I looked at other town ordinances and they just said underground storage. Now, we do have, I'm looking at something up here. I'm not just checking my email.
Oh, you're on Facebook. No, I'm just kidding.
We have a groundwater protection ordinance as part of the Webster zoning commission, zoning ordinance. It says, "All regulated substances stored in containers with a capacity of five gallons or more must be stored in product-type containers on an impervious surface designed and maintained to prevent flow to expose soils, floor drains, and outside drains." So it's already addressed in the zone, for one thing. And, so that was one change. There's another change here that I'm not- It's construction of new streets, roads, and other, it's about fifth or sixth item down.
Yep.
Construction of new streets, roads, or other accessways, and new utility right-of-way easement. Level 1 district, not permitted. Level 2 district, conditional use permit. Now, I don't see what's, I mean, you can help me out here, but I don't see what's wrong with a power right-of-way going through, going over a wetland or around a wetland. I mean, the big, we have power lines going over wetlands all over the place.
Okay, yeah. How about like a driveway? Where does, does that consistently fall underneath that? For a driveway, like, I know, like, say, like, if you were putting a driveway in, that was a question that I was wondering. Was the driveway part of that? I mean, if you go across the wetlands now, you gotta have a permit and all that sort of stuff, which, nothing new, but you'd need to get a conditional use permit with, with that in level 2 and level 1, and it's not permitted, period? Is that how that works?
Well, that's what it says here. I mean, I'm willing to open this for discussion.
I would think that you should, you know, instead of not permitted, we should be able to have a conditional use permit, if, you know what I'm saying? It could be not a big deal. As far as, you know, if you crossed a three-foot-wide brook, or whatever, putting a driveway in, that could cause a-
Well, I know-
Some people-
For example, for example,
Well, that, it's allowed in a level 2 district, just not in a-
Right, not a level 1. But what I'm saying is, would, like, say, like, alright, so, somebody wanted to build a new house over on Lake, what, Park? The Lake Road over there. You've got a brook in one spot, and it runs through it. Alls you'd really have to do is put in a culvert, you know, to cross that. But if that would be, would that, that would probably fall in your level 1 district, and it would shut them right out for not being able to do that.
Yeah. I think.
And the permit that they would file would be approved anyways.
Yeah, you're gonna have it engineered and whatever, but like, if you look at this now, not permitted, then you're shut down on it. There's no if, ands, buts about it.
Well, that's right, and I, my, I'm with you on that. I think we should get rid of the not permitted.
Should put, you know, a conditional use permit on that.
Isabel wants to make a comment.
Well, Lake Winnapocket is a, is a level 1 wetland.
Right.
And a, a road can wreak havoc with the wetlands.
Yep.
The purpose of this ordinance is to do our darnedest to protect-
Right.
Protect the wetlands, particularly level 1, as well as level 2, so-
I get that, but I'm saying, like, say, like, I'm not trying to single you out, but when, I think when we put a road in across to the David Victor property, there was a brook there. Had to get a, you know, a permit. And if it's good for there, it should be able to be good up the road, somebody else.
This provides more protection for the wetlands, and that's-
I, I get that, but that road went in there, so if it can happen here, why can't it over here? If you do a non, you know, no permitted deal, then you shut down. So, it's not fair.
You could go for a variance, Adam.
So, so that should be under the conditional use permit?
Yeah, it says not permitted.
Right, not permitted.
And I'd like to remove the the utility rights of way easement.
You'd like to what, Craig?
Remove new utility rights of way easement there.
Right?
Mm-hmm, no.
What's good for one, it's good for the other. That's how, and it's-
Yeah, it's, it's not like-
As long as it's all permitted and done right, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
Needs to be able to happen.
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna throw this open at the moment for comments.
Yeah?
Well, to what we just discussed, about the, a driveway being, you know, based on conditional, you know, they have to follow the proper rules to get the driveway permit.
Right.
And, and, you know, not, not, no way they can't do it, is what we're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just put a CUP instead of an NP there.
Yep.
Like, it'd be alright, and that way, you're still gonna have to get us, you know, an engineer's gonna have to do all the work to, to get it through.
Alright, I'll, I'll agree with that.
I guess I'd like to know which, where, I'm, I'm trying to look at the wetlands map. District 1, and I'm trying to, level 1. And I'm trying to figure out how likely is then, is this even gonna be an issue?
Could be.
It could be, yeah. Because I can think of, I can think of the solar project. They're gonna put a road in, just as, from Deer Meadow Road, right the right side of the power line going into their substation. So that's gonna cross, I mean, it's wet, it's, it's a wetland, right?
Right, yeah, a brook there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean-
Is that a level 1?
Probably that brook is, the Deer Meadow brook, if, if they get, go in, at some point, they have to cross it, because when you go up underneath the power line, that brook is up there. So, you know, it comes down through, and you, you've got a lot of waterways that go into it, so that can be a-
I, I think the answer to your question is yes, and it, it will come up. Anything else?
No. No, I, I agree with that. You know, you did, you know, again, the purpose of this is to protect wetlands, but at the same token, we want to be able, people to be able to use our property and do it right.
And of course, we're not guaranteeing with a conditional use permit that we'll approve it.
Right.
Is that correct?
We could, yes, that's correct. We could, we could approve it with conditions.
Yeah, if it looks like it's, the design is gonna be too harmful, if it looks like it, it violates a really sensitive area, we could refuse to approve a conditional use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'm, I think it'd be, I'd be okay with the-
Okay, so on page 5, these-
Which one? Are you talking about your new one or the old one?
Uh, new. We're, we're just talking about the new.
Right.
Yes.
Before we go, are you reading the uses section?
Well, you have a comment here?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Let's see, the, it's the sixth one down under uses. It says pollution of wetlands, surface, or groundwater is not permitted, not permitted. That's, that's awfully vague. And I'd like to get back to the question of storing gasoline, and I'd like to bring up the the groundwater ordinance once again. And I, the language in there, which speaks to groundwaterers and not to wetlands, I wonder if we could put that in here to provide a little more specificity as to what-
Well, it's alr-, it's already a law. I mean, we could, we could, it's already in the zoning ordinance. We could reference it here, but we're not gonna duplicate it.
But it's, it's, it's for groundwater, not for wetlands, so it's a different area. That's my point. And, and I think we need to provide a little more protection here in this, in this ordinance. So we could use similar language, and it would address the one that you read, Craig. All regulated substances stored in containers with a capacity of five gallons or more.
I, I don't wanna redo it. I mean, I'll reference it, but I'm not gonna put the language in.
Right, the five-gallon thing is, it's just, you're taking too much-
Yeah.
People are not gonna understand that, and they're just not gonna, they're not gonna understand.
What does the current, what does the current groundwater protection say about? About, about the petroleum?
The sentence that Craig read is from the groundwater protection ordinance. Do you want me to read it again?
Yeah, you might read it again, so that people understand it when I read.
All regulated substances stored in containers, and a regulated substance is defined, includes gas. All regulated substances stored in containers with a capacity of five gallons or more must be stored in product-type containers on an impervious surface designed and maintained to prevent flow to expose soils, floor drains, and outside drains. So yes, this is already enacted as part of the groundwater ordinance. And I'm suggesting that we might wanna put in at least similar language for the wetlands, for the-
Well, one of the things we heard in the public hearings-
I'm sorry?
One of the things that we heard in the public hearings was be reasonable, in other words. You know, you got into whether it's okay to use raid to kill bugs, you know? I mean, that's, that's like going into the rabbit hole, I thought. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, just a general statement about polluting, you know, use your, use your judgment is, and I realize that that makes enforcement difficult, but at the same time, it may, it's, it's almost a political decision. Does that make sense? We're-
My, I have a question, not a comment. I understand you're not taking a public comment. Are we looking at the 9/30 draft that is on the website? That's the-
You may have nothing on the old one.
No, no, you've got the old one.
The 11/4.
There's a ma-, there's a major rewrite.
Do you have a copy of that that we can follow along with?
I don't have any.
Yeah, you take mine.
You don't want my notes?
You guys share.
We'll share.
It says Russell isn't here, right?
He's got COVID.
Toppings of all of this.
They got one of the lock and key. I think I got all of it right here.
I didn't-
Yeah, the 9/30 had a lot of problems. Lengths being one of them. Wording being another. Formatting being another. So, there was a major rewrite in the last one.
There you go. Thank you. And is this new one dated 11/4? Is that on the website yet?
Probably not, right?
Probably not.
Okay. We're trying to get it, so it will be.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to-
Yeah.
Understand whether I listed on the website or whatever.
No, no.
So we'll share.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, just one last comment. I mean, your, your point about, or your comment about raid, this doesn't regulate raid.
No, I know that, but-
It regulates stuff that's in five-gallon containers or more.
Well-
Which are the ones that potentially pose more danger.
Well, I think you're just kinda being vague on the sense of, you know-
But it's still, it's, it's pollution of wetlands, surface, or groundwater, not permitted, not permitted. So it's like, it's, I would think that would be covering wetlands, surface, groundwater.
But what does it mean? What does that mean?
Well, you could add, under, in that line, refer to the groundwater ordinance.
Yeah.
Couldn't we?
Yes, let's-
Yeah, well, that would be very simple.
Because then that, that is much clearer.
Yeah, let's do that.
About exactly what's allowed.
I agree.
Okay.
That isn't really complicating it too much, it's just-
No, I think that's what he was getting at anyways. He would refer to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was hearing anyways.
Yeah, okay. Any other issues that people wanna bring up?
You mean, with the whole thing, or just little by little?
Well, whatever. It's, it's an open discussion here. I wanted to point out this on page 5, it says, "Any legal non-conforming structure." That's legalese for grandfathered, okay?
Yep, yep.
Legal non-conforming structure. So, I mean, most people, they don't think that through. Grandfathered, they sort of understand. But there are, basically, anything you've got before this ordinance came in is grandfathered. I mean, it says it right there.
Which is, is a, is, you know, a very fair thing to do. I just, I still worry. I get the reason behind this, absolutely. And there's a lot of state laws, and that, and it's kind of enforcing it, is what we're trying to-
Yeah.
To do, right?
The details.
The details of it. I just worry about that, you know, what's good for the goose isn't good for the gander. That bothers me a little bit with that, oh, you're grandfathered, but you're not. You know what I mean? So, so as, as a, as a, you know, middle-aged person in this town that's lived here for over, you know, well, let's see, almost 30 years, you know, I, I have, you know, we have kids coming up, we own quite a bit of property, and I just, I just don't wanna, I want to be fair to everyone, you know? It's not good to say, oh, well, I'm grandfathered and, you know, you're not. That's, that's what I, that's what I worry about, but we're working towards that, and, and you wanna be, still protect the wetlands at the same time.
Yeah, and, I mean, like, for example, Mike Jettie, who lives right close to the-
To the river, yeah.
He's basically grandfathered.
Yeah, but he couldn't then add, what, I like what this says, that it basically says, you can, you can repair, you can redo things, but you can't change the footprint. Nor can you make it even more non-conforming? I mean, I, I think it's, I think this is reasonable. It is grandfathered, but you can't make it worse.
So in other words, he's right to a halt what he does to his house.
Um, he could, he could go up.
Well, say if he wants to put a porch on the end of it, doesn't go toward the river. Can he do that?
I don't know enough about, about building to consider that. Fortures are often considered not part of the original footprint.
Well, my understanding is that the 50-foot line, because he has less than two acres, goes right through his living room.
Yeah.
So he could put that on the other side, and he'd be okay. That would be my take on that. I don't know if it's right or not.
Well, there again, that's, that's probably the scary part, so let's say somebody else doesn't have the same take you have. That would be what may be, you know?
Well, that's why we got five people on the planning commission. There's no, there's no-
One way.
One person's idea.
Yep.
But that, I think the, the idea of grandfathering is somehow got missed in a lot of, in our public hearings, and I wanted to call attention to that. And I hear you about unequal, you know, the future people. But I don't, I don't think the buffers in particular are too onerous. I mean, you start looking at these ordinances in other towns, and some of them have 150-foot buffers, right? So I think what we've tried to do is create a middle ground here, something that's gonna protect the wetlands without riling people up too much, preventing. And so, I was thinking, originally, I was thinking, well, let's, all this stuff about administering conditional use permits, there's, there's a number of pages, like, four or five pages, just how does it's administered? There's dispute, what do you do? Why couldn't we just get that off into another thing? And make, because when people look at the wetlands, they're, they're interested in two things. What's it doing? You know, what's the purpose of this thing? And how's it gonna affect me? Those are the two things they're interested in. I mean, they're only interested in enforcement penalties, blah blah. If there's a, if they have a problem, then they're gonna read it and stuff. Yeah, go ahead.
Craig, I thought we had, we had to put in that stuff about the CUP
Yeah.
because of-
Because of laws.
Somebody's rule.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's right. We had to keep it in. There's one other thing I had a problem with.
On the original or on your new one?
On the new one. Right on page 10, the last thing, validity. "If any section or part of the section or paragraph of this ordinance shall be declared invalid or unconstitutional, it shall not be held to invalidate or impair the validity force or effect of any other section or sections, or part of sections or paragraphs of this ordinance." I mean, that's contract language. They put that in contracts. Lawyers put that in contracts. And this is a, this is a law. You're not gonna declare, you're either gonna declare the whole thing invalid because it's constitutional. I mean, you're, you're violating some state law or something. I don't think you're gonna go down item by item and say, this item is invalid, or- So, I, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a-
I mean, I, do you not want that in there?
Yeah, get rid of it. Get rid of it.
I think it's just a reminder that if you have, if there is an issue with one thing, and somebody is able to get that ruled invalid, the whole thing doesn't get shot down.
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly the point, the-
Yeah, and it's-
The intention.
Take that out, you want, take that out.
I do. I don't know.
If somebody's gonna test-
I don't see the harm of having it in there, but-
They're gonna test it, they'll, they're only gonna test part of it. It wouldn't be the whole, you wouldn't think somebody would test the whole
It wouldn't.
Ordinance of everything.
I mean, that's my feeling, but-
They may test one thing, structure to-
But, I mean, as Susan said, it doesn't hurt to have it in. Isabel?
Well, I'm not a lawyer either, but I was gonna ask, Craig, is your plan to have a lawyer, the town lawyer, or somebody review this before?
Most of the, most of the language in here comes from the old version, right? I mean, we, we didn't change a lot here.
Well, but the thing about the variance, that a lawyer might be able to give us good advice about whether it really ought to be in there or there's no problem taking it out?
Validity.
Validity, sorry.
Yeah. I'm not sure we want to pay a lawyer a hundred bucks an hour or whatever, but
Just three.
Fairness.
I was going to say, well, the town one's not quite that much, but yeah, a hundred bucks is out the window, unfortunately.
Take mine, Serena Cora.
All right, so you want to keep it in? It doesn't hurt anything.
It, I mean, I can't see why we need it.
So in that, that structure right there, with a couple of my other questions, is, does that go along with the fact of, you know, like even with the vernal pools, the definition of a vernal pool? Is that what they're trying to say here, is that somebody has the right to, to say? Because even, even the state law with vernal pools is, is subject to interpretation. And that's the only other thing I find in here a little bit, is there's a lot of subject to interpretation, like even best practices, that's subject to interpretation. There's not, you know, and who's going to be doing that interpreting? That would be what would concern me as a citizen.
Yeah.
Because, and is that where that comes into play, the validity of it?
No.
No, okay, okay.
That's a legal
Just a legal thing to say.
What do you, what do you think of her comment?
I, I mean, I, I agree with that too, because there's things, there's times where the vernal pool's there and the next thing, it's not. And it all depends what, you know, when it is that it all could happen. And, I mean...
And on small acreage?
Yes.
On small acreage, that's where you could be, I mean, I suppose if you own more property, it's a little easier to work around it. But on a small acreage, if for some reason you buy two acres and all of a sudden, well, we've had some weird weather. We've had some very, very wet weather, we've had some very dry weather. I mean, we were in a drought, now we're in a, now we're flooding, you know? So, and sometimes with the vernal pool, that's the scary part. And even the state's rules are a little iffy in what to follow when you're doing it. So that's what concerns me, is who's going to go out and say, on somebody's two acres, that's a vernal pool or not?
There is something in here about if there are disputes on page eight, under C. If we're not sure about it, it says methodologies currently used by N H D E S shall be used. Planning board at the applicant's expense, or the applicant may engage a certified wetland scientist to assess. So there is something written in.
Right, right. That's just more expense to a situation.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I didn't, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, to address your point about who's going to enforce this, I mean, I don't think we can, I don't, I just don't think we can get any more specific. I mean,
Okay.
it's
Fair enough. I just, you see where my concern is there, is, you know, we, you know...
Yeah, right. I mean, it's the same problem with the state and all the regs. I mean, it's not just, it's not just this problem. It's a general problem, and I don't know, I don't know how to address it. Yes, Isabel?
Yeah, I think that is a good point, who is going to enforce it. And one suggestion I have is on page five, that this is under conditional use permits. Number three, right now, reads, "The planning board or its authorized designee may inspect the property during process, blah, blah, blah." I'd like to suggest that you add the town code and life safety inspector, because we do have that person on, as I understand it, on staff now, and that person will have a good bit of the responsibility to help with this. So it might read under number three, "The planning board is authorized designee or the town code life safety inspector may inspect the property," et cetera.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. He's not going to go out and look at it unless he's directed to by somebody in the town.
But, yeah, we, we would be, the planning board would then be the ones to ask him, but it
And as, as a member of the planning board, I'd want to go out and take a look myself.
Oh, yeah, but, but
See what's going on.
But adding that as somebody who might do it.
Sure, why not?
Where's that going?
I mean, I think, I think that's a good reference, and, you know, Craig, you may not be on the planning board forever.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you may not. And, and you have a lot of background in different things that somebody else that ends up there may not, and that would be what would concern me again, you know? Sometimes there's people that are just enough information to be what you'd call dangerous at times, right?
You think?
So we live it every day, right? But that's what makes me nervous.
Yeah, the code and enforcement person is certainly going to be more knowledgeable than
Well, we hope.
One would hope so, yes.
Right. If not, hopefully he would find, I think the, hopefully with your code enforcer, there's not a lot of feelings involved. That's not even the word I'm looking for, but he's just going to do what, if not, hopefully he finds out the answer. So it's not like the neighbor next door that might be on the planning board and says, "That person's in, got a vernal pool." You know what I mean?
Yep.
Because they might at that time, right? That minute, it may happen. But at least that, hopefully the code enforcer is going to do his
So we'll add that in. Anything else?
You've got some typos in here. Shall I send those to you later?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Don't worry about me catching them. I'm terrible.
I had it. By the way, a friend of mine is a editor, I mean, a professional editor.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, everything all over the place. I said, "Holy shit."
Oh, so he did take a look at it?
Oh, yeah.
So did he miss something? I guess so.
I normally
Well, that'd be fine, huh?
If I had it printed, I mean, I taught college English for a lot of years, and I would have had a pen and I would have been writing. But I didn't print it.
I have a nice assistant. She gets out the red pen. I feel like I'm in school.
Some of the language in the old version was lawyerly. I mean, it was convoluted and not subject to interpretation very well. And tried to rewrite that, simplify it, actually. So, I mean, now you can actually find things in here.
Yes.
It does, it does, no, Craig, for sure, for sure.
It's good, it's all good. It's way, way better than it was by far.
It does seem much more
Yes, easier.
Readable.
Right. Understandable.
So any other issues that, yes?
Okay, sorry. I, I think it is a lot shorter. It is more readable. I think the sections B, C, and D on pages six and seven need some work. They're repetitive, a little repetitive, and I think we could make this document even shorter, which I thought you'd be thrilled to hear, Craig.
Shorter and solid. You're harming my happiness.
Yeah.
What's repetitive?
Some of the wording in those three sections are repetitive.
Yeah.
And I think we could condense it, rewrite it, so it's not, so it's both clear and not repetitive.
Okay, well, do you have any, do you have any concrete suggestions?
Do you want what, Craig?
Do you have any things that we could, I mean, look at now and sort of discuss?
I have not come up with any rewrites.
We have scrapped this.
Examples of repetitiveness would include, you've got, you talk about barriers in a couple of different places in these sections. And I think we could just find that, have it in one place, not in two or three.
Okay.
So it's that kind of thing.
Okay. Any, okay, any other issues that we need to discuss?
Yeah.
Again, probably, probably my, my biggest fear in this, is I think there's a lot of good in here, is still the enforcement side of things. Especially for a concern that would be, you know, a number two with logging. Best management practice erosion controls under harvesting in New Hampshire. Those are laws that are, they're not, they're not set in stone type of laws. They're, they're suggestions on how to do what you need to do to protect the property. What would concern me is somebody showing up and thinking they, they think, well, that, they didn't file the B M P, so, you know, we got to get the law in here and we're going to shut them down. I just want to make sure that that is not, you know, that language is not taken to the level of that that's a law. You know what I mean? It's a, it's a, it's a recommendation on, when you're logging property, on making sure that we're doing, you know, the B M Ps, you know?
So, do you want to change the wording? It says, it says, "Logging operations must utilize best management."
Right.
Do you want to change that to, "Logging operations should, should utilize best management?"
Should, I suppose
Should practice the best management, oh, should practice best management practice.
Right.
And then scrap it.
I don't understand why you want to make it softer.
Because
It's not.
Well, and, and here's the thing, even like with the vernal pools, a lot of it is, is suggestions and it's, and we don't want to... What I get concerned about is when somebody starts running around and thinking they're going to be in, make it, that you're doing this wrong. Because the best management practice in erosion controls, I'm not maybe using the right words, I'm sorry, is, is, it's, it's a recommendation on what to do when you're logging, okay? The one thing about, you know, harvesting, I like harvesting.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't sound like, you know, harvesting property, you're doing it, there's lots of things that can change as you're harvesting, okay? So, yes, I understand not everybody follows the rules and the regulations, but
Like on my property where they basically went willy-nilly through wetlands and they didn't follow best practices.
And I, and I'm not going to make a judgment on that. I just know that what we practice, what we do, is, you know, to do the best we can now. When you get rainstorms that decide to, you know, that change, that could change. You can even probably speak on it better.
That happened last week.
That's right.
That, that's the way it goes. It happened, you know, that, that three inches overnight changes the whole way, how it all works. So, and the thing of it is, we have to follow that, the rule as far as getting permits to cross the wetland or whatever. You can't just start and go. You got to get a permit to do it. And, yeah.
And I would, just, can I finish my thought and then we're good?
Absolutely.
The other thing is too, in our properties nowadays compared to what it was to even the farm that I live on, which was cleared right to the lake. You know what I mean? So, so there's a lot of things already in there for protection in the sense that, that the property does heal itself. So sometimes you're going to find that it looks like, oh my God, that's a disaster. And then you go back a year or two later and it's, and it's healed itself. And, and that is, you know, we're talking probably, what, in the eighteen hundreds was when our, my house was built. You know, and I could see right to the lake back then with the nice pictures I've been able to be given. I know. So, so there's certain things in place already that do help to, you know, already mitigate the property and the water and stuff, you know, from harming other parts of our property. Sorry, go ahead.
I have some possible wording to get to your point.
Okay.
Marlo, you're concerned about using the word "must." How about, "Logging operations shall, to the best of their ability, use best management practices."
That's good.
That sounds good.
That'll work.
And let's change logging to harvesting.
Thank you. Not that, you hate to think any words got a sin to it, but just harvesting, because that's, that's pretty much what we, we're weeding a garden most of the time. Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are.
We're trying anyways. We all know how weeds take over.
Way it goes, some of your best, you know, biggest clear cuts got the best hardwood today.
I know, true. So there's all kinds of, we can demonstrate, I know.
I can show you a good one that's got pine trees that are that big and just as
Agreed. Agreed.
We planted fifteen years ago.
Around the turn of the century, forestry was just beginning, and there was a forester who, he was given a whole tract to land up in the Adirondacks. And they clear cut it and planted pines in there. And when he clear cut it, everybody's like, "Oh, what the hell are you doing?" You know? And as a consequence, he got fired. He had his whole thing. It was that, he was at the forestry school in New York, was at Cornell University.
Yep.
And after this little incident, they moved it to Syracuse. He was out.
Wow, yeah. No, and you're correct. I'm so sorry. I just, well, harvesting and logging, okay, I, I, I think
You go back and look at those things.
Well, Maine does it a lot. Maine does it a lot, yeah. So
They, yeah, I digress here.
Yeah, I was going to say we're a little off topic.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
That's right. Well, unfortunately, I got three of them in the field. But it's something that heals itself quickly and a lot of times, like your point, regrows, you know, which is good. That's what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, there's all kinds of forest management practices. Anything else?
And I'm just going to ask it just to be devil's advocate. Let's say my, let's say I'm harvesting my property or logging, and a plan boarding, a planning board member comes along and says, thinks that, that I am, you know, breaking the, or the loggers breaking the rules in a sense. What happens next? So let's say it was, let's just, let's just use devil's advocate. Let's say it was you and you said, is it, does it, do we call the town? And does then the town send out the building inspector? Or how's that work?
That's a good question.
It is a good question. I don't know. If it were me, I would talk with you and say, "What's going on here? What do you want to do? What are you doing?" And then if I disagreed, I'd bring it up at the, at the planning board.
Okay.
Have a discussion about, invite you to the planning board, and you can explain whatever you think is going on. And the planning board will make a decision. I mean, I'm not going to, I mean, that's the way I think it should work.
Right. I still feel that's a little, even a little bit invasive on somebody's, you know, property in a sense. I just, I just
Forest ranger, you want the forest ranger to show up?
Well, probably not. Maybe not. Maybe we just want Craig to say, "Hey, come to the meeting." I don't know.
It does say it's going to be administered by the planning board, enforced by the select board, their designee or as permitted by law.
Yeah, the select board is
There can be a civil fine.
Ooh. The select
You have to see, now we're getting away from, what if you've got a select board, okay, that doesn't know squat about logging? Where are you going to be then?
It lists specifically the laws that are, have to be applied in Craig's version. So
Because if you've got just a little bit of mud, they could get all haired up over it, which will dry out in two days, maybe. And that, that part of that, I, I don't know. I, you're better off with the state stepping in.
Well, because they, they, they know, they know what they're, and this is not saying that maybe the planning board or the select people would be very knowledgeable in any of these rules. So don't, don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm not, I'm no, I'm no wetland scientist. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, let's say you've got somebody who wasn't as conscientious as you guys. You know, you come in, by the time you go to a meeting, they're out of there.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah.
I mean, what's your, what's your recourse?
But that's why we do have rangers.
Then they get
Yes, I do. I think, to be honest with his question, I would rather have a ranger.
Yeah.
Probably stop at my job than, 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 maybe a planning board member that had, has, or, in any of these, you got rangers or you got, or you got, you know, the wetland side of things, where that's what they're educated in. And I'm not saying that people can't be educated in everything. I'm just, that wouldn't be me. I would have to do a lot of research and before I would even be able to give an opinion because that's not my expertise at that point, you know? And that's, that's the point, that's the point that I just, I think I get what the town's trying to do in the sense, and, you know, you guys, in the sense that you want to be able to at least enforce if somebody's out of control and D E S can't get there, correct? Is that, that's what we're heading for, right?
But the ranger would take care of that.
Yeah, so, on the logging side of things, yes.
I, I, I'm thinking that that's how that should be, instead of selectmen, planning board, or whatever.
Yeah, of course.
It should be the state guy.
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of them, so...
Right, they come out.
Yeah, they take the visit a lot.
Yeah, and they don't bring donuts and coffee.
What's wrong with that?
As far as logging and agriculture goes, the state has pretty good laws.
Rules, yeah.
They do, yep.
And we pretty much wanted to reference those and stay away, I mean, this is it, and this, this, this wording comes directly from the, uh, New London, uh, wetlands ordinance, I kinda looked at that, and, you know, I don't...
New London?
What'd you, what'd you...
I'm not gonna say anything.
But in any case, we don't, I, I don't really, I don't really wanna get in, involved in logging and agriculture.
No, 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 but, but, but here's the thing, you, you're, you, even, you know, anybody here may say, oh, well, we'll just let the state handle it, I think all I wanna make sure of, in all of these, is that the, the, the one that has the history, I hate to say educated, 'cause I'm not saying anybody's not an educated, it's just, they need to, we need the proper authorities to be able to react, and not somebody on the planning board, the select board, that may just have an issue with someone.
But once again, it's not a one-person board.
I, I understand that, I understand that, but, but I think, I think even with my little bit of history of just getting on the select board, I can see, and everybody has a right to their opinion, I, I hate to even say it's not true, 'cause it's true, that's what, I just wanna make sure that it's not a board of opinions and then a board of opinions, and then that opinion is so one-sided that it's not fair and...
It only takes two and one.
That's right.
So, it's like, it needs to go with like, the state...
These are good rules, I just wanna make sure.
Needs to be enforced by the state, instead of the selectmen or the planning board.
It, it says agriculture and farming, timber harvesting and forestry, permitted, permitted, so, we don't really, we don't really, which...
Why don't you, why don't you add that to the, whatever, if you, you're gonna be permitted and then just go and buy your RSAs, buy the, it, you'll be fall, it's put like, permitted, uh, using, following the RSAs of, you, you follow what I'm saying, instead of going through all of what you, what you, it would clarify stuff, right?
Well, yeah, and I think, I think, I think the big thing is that to call the correct, if somebody's got a problem, call the correct law at the town, how do you, how do you say that?
I mean, it's kind of, but what you said earlier, Marlo, is if we think some, somebody thinks something's wrong, who did they call? We have to have something in here about enforcement.
State.
State.
Yeah, and in terms of forestry and logging, agriculture.
Yeah, there's a lot of that, yeah.
We don't touch it, we don't touch it, it's a state issue.
Yeah, but who's gonna call the state?
Whoever's complaining, and they do it, so, if you think they don't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the question is, is, we have this section on enforcement and penalties, do we not want that in?
Well, if you look on uses, it's permitted.
I know, but, but that's my question, you put it in here, you, don't we want it? We don't want it to say who enforces it? I mean, I, I'm not a...
No, I know, I know what you're getting at, 'cause you're answering kind of my question, is, we say it could go to the planning board or the select board, I'm saying that in this type of situation, it should go to the, it should go to the state, rangers.
Maybe, maybe what we would say is it would go to the planning board and the select board, which will be, which should be, which would be expected to, or required to contact, um, the relevant state authorities?
Well, I, I hear where you're going, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking, um, I'm thinking that we don't wanna touch this stuff.
Well, so, but, but I think, so maybe I'm misunderstanding, I may be, I may be misunderstanding, so, please correct me.
Yeah.
If, let's just say, I'm just gonna use an example, you're driving by and you go, and I'm on the planning board, okay, and I'm like, oh, I think they're doing something wrong, does that mean that the planning board is then gonna call that landowner and say, hey, and ask them to come in and all that, that's what you were kind of saying, that, that they'd come in, they'd ask what's happening on their logging and, and go from there?
No, logging, no.
Okay, so maybe I'm misunderstanding this wrong, though?
Yeah, we're not, it, logging is permitted, it doesn't say anything about...
Going to the planning board or the, or the...
Planning board.
But, it, and if you were the neighbor, and you decided you didn't like it, and they called the planning board, you'd say, call the ranger or whatever.
I'd say, call the state, I don't, I don't...
I just wanted to make sure that's clear, yeah.
That's where it needs to go.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you on that.
Yeah.
And that's what you were kind of trying to understand, right? Yeah.
So, maybe, maybe we can change some wording that addresses your concerns here.
Well, I, I was wondering if the wording is okay, that per sentence, this is under enforcement account, it says, this ordinance shall be administered, et cetera, by the select board, they're designee, or as permitted by law, and that last phrase would speak, I think, to your concern, that you're touching on Marlo and adding about, um, forestry and, because that would be dealt with by the forestry people.
Right, right, I guess, well, I guess when you just, when you even mentioned that it could be the select board that, that, but I suppose we, you know, they slot in tender cuts and stuff, I suppose, or, or, I suppose.
Well, do you, I mean, we're referencing all this RSA stuff here, do you wanna keep that in, or do you wanna...
I think the RSAs are good, because that's what we have to...
You gotta follow.
We gotta follow the, or, you know, that industry has to follow them anyways, and as a town, you don't wanna be able to go buy a logging job and say, oh, they, you know, if you have a problem, you just wanna call the proper people, I don't think the select board or the planning board are the proper people, it's the, it's the state officials, which there's a lot of them out there, so...
And it might, it might be the planning board that contacts the state.
I suppose.
If somebody complains, we say, okay.
Yeah, and I, and if somebody complained to me, I'd say, close it.
Right, that's the way it should, it needs to be the state, not, not us, that way it taken, 'cause I mean, that, that all, every job is different.
Yeah.
I mean, you can cut one, hell, I cut one on the side of 103 in the rocks, I'm not proud of it, but it happened, that's what they wanted. If a landowner wants a cut, that's what we do, cut it, whether the people like it, whether they don't.
Yeah, well, I...
So, it sounds like, I mean, Isabel correctly pointed out that...
It's kind of in there.
It's kind of in there, do you wanna be more explicit and say, you know...
I think that's all I was saying, I just don't think that, I think the, I think when you start getting planning boards or select boards involved, in a, in a situation where there's already a lot of enforcement that has the education for it, that's what I would like to see it to be.
That's what they get paid for.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, most of this ordinance is aimed at future development, you know, what you can do, I, I...
Right, but, you've gotta stop and think about this too, like, if you're gonna build a new house, okay, it's easier to take those hundred-foot pines down when there's no house there, rather than, oh, we're gonna squeeze this house in there, now they want the trees cut.
It'll be a lot more costly.
Right? Doesn't that happen?
A lot, yep, yep.
So, there's a fine line of all of that.
Yeah.
I've seen it, thirty-eight years of it.
But, you know, there again, it's all in what, you want people to be able to do what they want on their property and follow the best rules that they can to not harm the water, and that's what you, that's what they're trying to get, that's what they're after, but, you know, I have a, I'm married to a tree hunter, and we're loggers. Don't you touch a maple. You could lose your hand, yeah.
Do you wanna add a little section, I'm thinking, add a little section, say enforcement of harvesting, logging operations shall be referred to the state or something like...
Yep, well, or you could just leave it here and just say, um, and administered by a planning board, enforced by the select board, they're designee, it says, or as permitted by law, you could say something, who will contact relevant state authorities?
Where, where, what, where are you?
They're still in that same section.
I still look at it as if there's a, if there's a landowner, there's, or a person driving by that's got a problem, I don't see the need to involve the planning board or the select board, I feel like, there's enough enforcement out there for that situation, that they can go directly to the state, and trust me, they'll get back to you, it's not like they'll ignore you. And I think some of the problem is DES is also overwhelmed, for them to enforce their own rules has been a little bit difficult, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, but that's not on the forestry side, there's plenty of it.
All right, well, um, where, what section are you in?
We were still in the same section.
Yeah, which section is it?
It's E on page nine, this is where the enforcement and penalties section was.
Well, let's add a, a thing in here that says, um...
You said...
Enforcement of agriculture and logging, or logging, shall be referred to the state.
Good deal.
Sounds good. Since they're the experts.
That's right.
What else we got?
The only other thing, and, and this may just be not understanding, is bringing back to the, well, I guess, I guess it would be kind of what's happening to Mr. Duddy, you know what I mean? How do we, I know his grandfather, but like you pointed out, what if he wants to put on a...
Porch.
Porch or, or addition, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows I appreciate the, the grandfather part, but I, it, it, it still at least bothers me that, that, you know, somebody that's living there, that's been there, is not able to, you know, 'cause maybe there's a, 'cause, 'cause I think on the smaller, it's, you know, the, the, um, hold on, where is that on here? The, you have the two districts, right? Would he, which district would he be in?
Warm one.
Would he be level one?
Yeah, because he's right on the Blackwater River.
Yeah, okay, yeah, 'cause I think the, and that still makes me a little, but the level two district gets a little bit, you know, 'cause if you have smaller parcel and you wanna, you know, do something on it, you could be, you might not, you might not even, your land might not even be worth doing anything with at this point because of the level two district, fifty-foot buffer.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, I mean, there are some, there are quite a few small parcels down here, and some of them are close to wetlands.
Yeah.
Which, you know, has always been a thing with any town, like, I can give an example, we had a large piece of property in another town, and, you know, we were trying to get, we were, we're gonna do something with it, we're either gonna put, we're gonna try to do it like an over fifty-five, so you're, you're shrinking your, your, your envelope down, right, right, and leaving all this other open space, um, but, you know, it didn't go that way because their rules weren't written that way, and the neighbors didn't wanna see an over fifty-five, they wanted to see, they would've rather seen a development over the seventy acres, okay? But, but this is what, this is my education, ooh, it's fun, um, that's the only thing that makes you a little nervous, is, hey, somebody can buy two acres, you know, and all, oh dear, there's, you know, the vernal pool and it's, you know, but it's there today, gone tomorrow, I don't wanna see us make people do the, the bigger parcel, and we wanna keep that as open space as much as possible, correct?
Well, that's what the, uh, environmental use clause is all about.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll look at that a little...
We're not, we're not touching that.
Gotcha.
If there's nothing else...
Do you guys have something to say? I, I mean, I know he said you couldn't talk, but you don't...
I know, but I feel like you're here, yeah.
You're here, and it's only Gloria, I don't think you can beat us up too bad.
If not, we're getting on the table.
So, if you get some, I'd like to hear some of your questions.
Some of what you've already talked about addresses my concern in one area, if you may, but...
I don't, I, may I?
Yeah, go, identify yourself first.
So, Chris Hodgson, sixty-three Lake Road, my wife Elizabeth, my in-laws next door, um, it's great, by the way.
You're a guy, there you go.
You better say that, 'cause they're probably watching, your kids watch.
So, so first, thank you for this.
Yeah.
Um, so I think just, I, I probably wanna reserve my comments for the public hearing, my detailed comments, but my, my overall reaction is that there are still some internal inconsistencies in this, so, that I think should be addressed and thought through, if not their inclusion, like, how mechanically they would work, so for instance, you've got a number of uses that are permitted in District One if you have a conditional use permit, but then for smaller parcels in a, in District One, conditional use permits aren't allowed, and there is new language in there that talks about for new construction, but I think that's, it's a little ambiguous, at least in my specific, or our specific example, because we have a, what is, would even loosely be considered a seasonal cabin, it's really a one-season cabin, and, you know, we bought it with the eventual hopes that we could live there, and that would require making it a four-season, um, you know, is that considered an expansion of the use, because expansion of the use is not allowed?
How, um, how many acres do you have?
Uh, just under one, yeah, so our, our entire, um, property would be in District One, and it just so happens that we have a, a stream by virtue of where the town chose to put a culvert, it's not a stream on the other side of Lake Road, it's just a stream on our side, 'cause there's a concentration of runoff that occurs, and, so, um, so I'm, I'd like to better understand what that means for someone who owns a small piece of property, has a seasonal cabin, um, I, I support the notion of not expanding the footprint, you know, you wanna maintain that feel of these rural New Hampshire lakes, uh, but I have questions around, you know, could we put a well in, you know, we currently draw water from the lake, uh, could we, um, it appears that we can go up in the footprint, uh, but I noticed that we couldn't re-contour a grade in District One, and, so that really limits our ability to put a foundation in because of the slope on the property, so things like that are...
How far from the lake are you, is your house?
Uh, it is, uh, ranges between fifty-two or three and fifty-eight or nine, there's some orientation to the shoreline, uh, but...
So, it sounds like you're into this fifty-foot buffer.
No, well, we are for the stream, uh, but not for the lake, however, the buffer for District One is a hundred.
Although if you have less than two acres, it's fifty.
Yeah, if you see that on page two, down the bottom.
Uh, page two of the November four document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Under E, buffer, so you'll be okay?
Right, the, the challenge we have is that because, so we have, you can imagine the, um, the shorelines at the front, and on one side is the stream, we have only, uh, I think a hundred and ten feet of frontage on the parcel, and the stream isn't our boundary, so that, we're sort of, that really, that fifty-foot buffer really, uh, limits what we, what we can do, and, um, so, so those are, I'd like to understand what it means for, for that smaller property that has a structure on it already, that's not a four-season, uh, and then, and then lastly, um, the mechanism for issuing a CUP has language which seems to be extremely constraining, so that's on, uh, page... So that's on, uh, page seven at the top. So it says, in order to approve the application, the planning board must find based on the application information that has been submitted, the proposal is essential to the productive use of land not within the district. And I'm trying to understand, because I don't own any land not in the district, then how could I accomplish a showing?
The di, the dis, the district is the lake plus a fifty-foot buffer.
Well, you're, there, there seems to be though, so maybe this is my, my misunderstanding, you have a defined term of a district, and then you, then you narrow that for smaller lots. But that's the buffer that you're.
The district includes.
Fifty feet.
The wetlands plus the buffer, in this case fifty feet.
Okay.
And it says, it says in early. Uh, right on page one, Roman numeral three. The Wetlands and Watershed Protection District, the district is an overlay district that consists of all wetlands and surface waters and all their buffers. So that's, we're getting, I sort of read earlier what a buffer, what a district was. I tried to get us to think about that in bigger terms. But, um, I don't know about this stream. What, is this an intermittent stream, or what is this stream?
We're supposed to shoot a piece of land, is that kind of like Dawes? Near Dawes, the brook that comes down through there?
Say it's, uh, who are you near? We're between Klaus's and.
We're two downs.
Yeah.
Towards wetlands.
So by gobs?
Right, no, right next to clouds.
Other end.
Gobs.
So I think you're coming in from, um, the dam side, right?
Northeast end of the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So coupled before my mom's house, right?
Yeah, a little bit flat.
And there's a brook that runs around.
Well, I think, yeah, well, I think like he said, the runoff from the road.
Yeah, so what, what happens is, is, you know, a number of seeps on that hillside, and it sort of accumulates on the opposite side of the stream, or the road, rather, and then there's a culvert, and it's, um, you know, I'd say nine or ten months of the year, there's flowing water there. It's, it's not a, uh, you know, it's, it's not a ditch.
Right, so you've got a stream running, basically dries up when it is dry, and this time of year, you've got water running.
I've got water, some water, all we have is water.
You've got water running there, so it's pretty much a brook.
I mean, one of the things that's in here is on occasion, it says, well, if there, we can waive, we can grant a waiver. If there's strict conformity to the specific CUP would cause undue hardship to the owner of the land, or specific circumstances relative to the CUP, or conditions of the land indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So there is some wiggle room.
So where is that?
This is on page nine, right above the section that says definitions.
Is that, is that due to this one?
That's in the, that's, this is the new one.
No, 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 I'm just, I was wondering if it was due to this.
Yeah, tell them where it is, isn't it?
No, I can see it.
Okay.
I just don't remember seeing it in the September thirty draft.
I, I believe it was in there, maybe it was.
Because there's always, you know, there's always a little bit of wiggle room for circumstances that don't perfectly fit.
This sort of comes back to what you were saying about.
It's just, it's just scary. Because if you get, if, if they plan on in years from now, um, you know, making it so they can live there year-round, and all depending on who's sitting up here, their, their lives are a little bit in their hands, and that's because they have that right to, and I, I guess I.
I think that's always the case, though, when you build something.
I guess.
You're always gonna have to.
You're sure, live free or die, but.
So would it be helpful, um, or maybe would the board welcome questions in advance of the public hearing? And I, I've participated in a ton of these public hearings, and I know how overwhelming it is sitting up there to narrow in on what you're hearing, and, and this all comes down to, you know, really specific use of language and intent, and, and I'm just, I'm wondering, would that be more helpful to you than?
I, I would suggest you send your comments in writing to Russell Tatro at the, at the, uh, he's the land use coordinator of the town.
Right, yeah.
And he will send them to, will forward it to us. But that would be helpful, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It would be, it's all good, input.
So just one last thought, um, the one-year, uh, window for non-use. You know, for us, we really use it about eight weeks a year. You know, the sun literally can be seen through the walls when it comes up in the morning, and, and, yeah, it is.
Hey, you won't be sick that way.
That's right, yes.
You know, and, you know, last year with the pandemic, right, like, we, we may, it was conceivable that we wouldn't have been there at all. And, and if that were to occur when this is in effect, then the property would be really impacted by that, that just summer of, of non-use. And I, I wonder, I wonder if that's the, I don't think that's the intent.
Disorder, we're gonna have another public hearing, as I said earlier, probably in early December, to talk about these changes. And then it goes on the warrant article to be voted on at the town, by the town. And at that point, it becomes law, at that point. Right now, it's just a piece of paper, it's a draft.
So I'll follow up with some written questions, and I hope that'll be helpful. Help me organize my thoughts, and hopefully it'll be helpful to you.
That'd be great. If you have questions, send them to Russ, too, you know.
Twenty eighteen, ten years.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for coming. We're not trying to be authoritative here. I mean, I, I realize we are, but.
I sit on a similar, I mean, we, we live in, in Tukuk, and I sit on that town's CIP board, so I totally, I totally understand.
Are we done?
I think so. Anybody else?
I think we're done.
Any comments? I guess we're done.
And you were letting us speak even though we weren't supposed to speak.
That's fine.
Appreciate the opportunity.
That's fine.
That's just the Yankee in us. We want to hear what everybody has to say.
Craig, what's the next step?
Um, I think the next step is, I will rewrite this, maybe we can talk. And I'll send out another version. You can look at it, make sure that it's okay.
And then?
And, um, I think we'll have another public hearing. I'm thinking, I don't want to do it, well, it has to be noticed, like ten days ahead of time for a public hearing.
And I don't, is it, can we, do we, can we wait until after the holidays to do the next public hearing? The only reason I say that is because you know how that goes.
Yeah, I do, I think that's a mistake, waiting that long. I mean, I just, I can't tell you how much I want to get this thing off my plate.
No, it has to be right.
Theoretically, we have a meeting on December sixteenth.
Yes. Um, I'm thinking Wednesday, December first, is what I'm thinking of public hearing, is that.
On a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't be here.
Oh, well, how about a Thursday?
A Thursdays, a Thursdays, that's why I did this, because I can do Thursdays.
All right, so maybe we'll see if Russ can schedule us for Thursday, the second of December.
Right.
So that's what would be, December second?
December second.
And that's gonna be the next meeting that we have?
With the, the public.
Not the public hearing. We have our normal.
When's that next one?
Eighteenth of November, yes.
November eighteenth is our normal planning commission meeting.
A week from this Thursday.
We, yes.
Will the new version be on the town website, or how, how would we get a copy of that?
Uh, yes, after, after we make these changes that we came through tonight, we will put it on the website.
Thank you.
Without any more questions or anything, I motion this meeting adjourned.
My second.
Aye. Aye. That's it, Russ.
Feel better? Because we have a select board meeting here shortly.
Oh, you have that?
Take notes.
You have that?
No.
Oh.
Next one.
How are you? Good, how are you?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not ready for smoke.
Like it?
No, we're not. Not really. Yeah, but, yeah. I, I, I feel, I feel for him.
Yeah, me too.
And I, I worry, I worry about that. Just, just.
Level two.
Yeah, you know, level one, hey, yeah, about this, I mean, great, I know that's.